Welcome to the regular meeting of City Council, February the first, two thousand and sixteen. I'm going to ask Councilman Forrest Fleming to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
You'll join me, please, all right. I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and please be seated.
I'll ask our invocation be given by Reverend George Logan, pastor at New Day Christian Church. George?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for life. We thank you for liberty. We thank you, Father, for this great country that we all live in. We thank you for the ability to have a democracy under you and under your guidance. We're governed by the people. And, Father, we thank you, most importantly, for your son, Jesus. We thank you for giving us your life. We ask, Father, that as we, as this meeting is opened up, that you give us, give the councilman, give the mayor, give us wisdom to conduct the affairs of this great town in which we live in. We pray that there would be a spirit of unity amongst all of us, amongst the citizens, amongst the governing officials. We come against anything that would be divisive in nature, any competitive jealousies, anything that would hinder this community from growing and from prospering the way you deem it to. We also pray, Father, that every single individual in this community be represented well, that no one would be on the outskirts, no one would be marginalized, that everyone will find a place of comfort and a place where they are truly celebrated and also affirmed and brought into the whole of this community. So we thank you for these things, and we know that unless you build the house, we all labor in vain, then build it. So we ask that you help us build this city. Help it be a place that is a destination for those who are looking for a good place to live, that the words that will be resounding in this community, that Morganton is a wonderful place to live. So we thank you for these things. You said in your word, if we lack wisdom, that we could ask you for it, and that you would give it to us liberally and not withhold it. So we ask you for wisdom this very evening, and so we trust you to give it to us. We trust you to give it to the mayor, trust you to give it to the councilmen, and trust you to give it to any and all people working as staff in this great city. And we also thank you for giving it to the citizens of Morganton, that we may govern ourselves well. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, George. I'd like to introduce our City Council to my far right, Forrest Fleming, City Councilman, Lilly Vina, our City Attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor. Sally Sandy, our City Manager. Sidney Simmons, our City Council. John Cantrell, our City Council. And Kelly Russell, our recording clerk. And interpreting for the deaf is Becky Brinkley. We have several retiree resolutions. The first will be Lee Anderson, who is Director of Design and Development. Okay. Lee, if you'll come forward to the podium, I'm going to ask Councilman Cantrell to make the presentation. Sally, would you tell us something about Lee?
Oh.
Well, let me take that back. Let me read the resolution. Let me read the resolution. Sorry, Lee, I won't do that to you. Okay.
Probably plain to tell.
I like the idea.
This is a resolution honoring Lee E. Anderson. Whereas Lee E. Anderson was employed by the City of Morganton as Assistant Planner in the Community Development Department on November the second, nineteen eighty-seven, promoted to Director of Community Development on November twenty-third, nineteen ninety-two, changed to Director of Development and Design on October seventh, two thousand and three. And whereas Lee Anderson has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the Development and Design Department and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of all the citizens of Morganton for thirty years. And whereas Lee Anderson retired from the City of Morganton as Director of Development and Design Department on February first, two thousand and sixteen. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Lee Anderson and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the mayor adopt this resolution to Lee Anderson adopted this first day of February, two thousand and sixteen. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, Clerk. Councilman Cantrell, will you make the presentation? And you're welcome to say some comments if you'd like.
No, we don't have a resolution.
We have a motion to adopt the resolution.
We move.
We have a second. All in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes four zero. Thank you, Forrest.
I was told to speak up. I do have a thing or two to say to Lee and about Lee, and I have three checks that I'm going to hold on to until I get through because I don't want to be interrupted. There are a couple of things that you may not know about Lee. One, he's really sixty-five years old. That's why he's retiring. He couldn't walk away from a job like he's had for the last thirty years. And another thing, you know, Lee has been very, was very involved in the planning of this building. There's only one office in this building that is a corner office. Guess who occupies the corner office? Lee has been a leader, a team builder, a visionary, an innovator, and he's been behind so many projects that we have had during the last thirty years. The development of our downtown area, which just, I know I'll miss some, this new CVS building, the BB&amp;T building, the theater, the restaurant, the work that was done in the redevelopment area, options, Millside Manor, Morganton Trading Company, the East Union condos, the East Union townhomes. He has helped with finding a new grocery store, which will be on Avery Avenue, Food Matters. He's worked in development of our senior housing projects, not just Millside Manor. He was right in the middle of redeveloping this building. And the original plan for our redevelopment commission was to acquire that lot, the block that the old A&amp;P store was on. Harris Teeter had indicated that they wanted a build, build a new building there. Well, it took a few years, and the redevelopment commission was able to acquire the majority of that block, but Harris Teeter changed their mind. What do we do next? What do we do next, Lee? That, but those were just one of the many projects that Lee had to stop and restart. When we started the redevelopment commission, this building was operating as a hosiery mill, and it didn't take long before they closed their doors. Here's a big, old hosiery mill that needs to be rehabbed. And Lee, with the help of others, came up with Morganton Trading Company. And Morganton Trading Company got about halfway through with this project, and we sat for a year before another developer came along. And Lee was involved in dealing with these developers. He has teamed up with developers. He's teamed up with other department heads. Another example is Cataba Meadows, the Greenway Trail, the work that's been done downtown. You know, the farmer's market, Morganton Station. And he's managed not just planning and development, he's managed the engineering department also. You know, a guy that's done all this, thank goodness, he's a friend of mine, and I believe I'll give him all three of these checks and wish him well.
We started and stopped a lot on all those projects, it seems like. Golly, thirty years goes by in a hurry. For me, not to say it was fun and enjoyable would be an understatement, I mean, because it is a wonderful city to work in. Wonderful staff, wonderful council, wonderful citizens in the boards and commissions I work for. At one point or other, I probably spoke to about everybody in this town at some point, or either made them mad. Because as a planner, it's a, you're kind of in a lonely spot sometimes. What you do, though, is you find out that there's a whole lot of gray in the world. It's not black, it's not white. Almost everything's gray. And it took me a few years to figure that out, because when you come out of college and you're fresh and green, you decide, you think you know a lot, you didn't know anything. I'm still figuring it out thirty years later. And fortunately, I've had a team behind me and a staff and a support to accomplish a lot of things here. I feel really good about kind of where we've, where we've come from and where we've gone. There's a long way to go, a lot of things to do in this town, great opportunities in here, a lot of great projects that are on the wings. Sally said, "Why are you leaving within the middle of all this new stuff that's getting ready to happen?" But here's the, here's the deal. It never stops. The change is always taking place, and I embrace the change. I look forward to the changes that are ahead of me. I told somebody the other day, "Act Two, I hope it's better than Act One." I don't know how I'm going to beat it because I've done so much fun stuff here. Going to school, I've started going back to school last week. That's a change. I hadn't been in school in thirty years. I had to study all day today. It was my first day off is looking at books and taking practice tests. So I'm looking forward to the next, next years ahead of me. I hope at some point to use some of the knowledge that I've gained here and some of the education I'm gathering from other folks to do some of the things here that maybe I wasn't able to accomplish as a, as a city planner. It's been, it's been a pleasure. It's been an honor. I hope that each and every one of you continues to show collaboration and appreciation to all the good folks that work here and the leadership in the, in the system, Sally especially, because those are the folks that, that show you what tomorrow's going to be. They work hard at it every day. You work hard over at night. You never leave it. You're always with it. Most of my best ideas came out at three o'clock in the morning. My wife wondered why I was up working on the computer, and I'd say, "I think, I thought of something really cool that we could maybe do here." And I'd bring it to Sally and say, "Sir, you're crazy. We're not going to be able to accomplish that." But I'm pretty stubborn, so I've been able to accomplish a lot. So I thank you, and it's because of all the good people I've got working for me and the department, all the department heads. I want to thank Mike Cronk for hiring me. If it wasn't for Mike, I wouldn't even be here. It's a lot easier to get hired then. I probably couldn't get hired today because I saw some of the things they were asking for, and I'm like, "I probably couldn't qualify for that job." So it's, things have changed, but it's getting better, and I hope, I hope it continues to be. Thank you very much.
Lee, thanks and best wishes. We also have a resolution honoring Scotty Radcliffe. The resolution reads, whereas Scotty F. Radcliffe was employed by the City of Morganton as Public Safety Officer Trainee in the Public Safety Department on January twelfth, two thousand and four, promoted to Public Safety Officer on June fifteenth, two thousand and four, promoted to Public Safety Officer Special Assignment on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and seven. And whereas Scotty F. Radcliffe has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the Public Safety Department and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the city, citizens of the City of Morganton for twelve years and three months. And whereas Scotty F. Radcliffe retired from the Public Safety Department on February first, two thousand and sixteen. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Scotty F. Radcliffe and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Scotty F. Radcliffe adopted this first day of February, two thousand and sixteen. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, Clerk. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. We also need some council action to declare a Glock Model Twenty-two surplus. Do I have a motion? Somebody will read that motion.
I move to declare as a surplus Glock Model Twenty-two, forty caliber, serial number X H Y four ninety-seven, as a fire service, and a fire service helmet, sold and presented to retired P S O Radcliffe.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Sally?
I am purchasing that for him for a dollar.
We do have a resolution, that resolution certified, and we will get a plaque to Scotty this week. Our third-
I'm assuming he's not here.
He is not here.
Is that right, Mr. Mayor?
Able to be here.
There was a family emergency.
There was a family emergency. We also have a resolution honoring John W. Bill Wilson III, and I'll ask Bill Wilson to come to the podium and ask Councilman Forrest Fleming if he'll make that presentation after we read the resolution. That resolution reads, whereas Bill Wilson III was employed by the City of Morganton as Auditorium Manager in the Executive slash Auditorium Department on May twelfth, nineteen eighty-six, promoted to Director of the City of Morganton Municipal Auditorium, known as Kama, on November third, nineteen eighty-six. And whereas Bill Wilson has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the Kama Auditorium Department for thirty years and has given of his time and efforts for the benefits of the citizens of North Carolina and the City of Morganton as a public servant for forty-four years and three months. And whereas Bill Wilson retired from the City of Morganton as Director of the City of Morganton Municipal Auditorium on February first, two thousand and sixteen. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Bill Wilson and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Bill Wilson adopted this first day of February, two thousand and sixteen. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, Clerk. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Forrest, would you like to make that presentation, make some comments?
Well, I don't know what the city plans to do, but my understanding is that Kama is Bill Wilson's building. And where we are going to have performances after this is going to be a challenge. If Bill decides to, when he leaves, take his building with him. I hope that won't be the case. Bill's a great friend of mine and has been for several years, and we all hate to recognize the fact that he's going to be leaving us, and he's already done so. He takes with him a great legacy of having brought to the City of Morganton a lot of history, culture, great performances, giving a lot of people in Morganton and Burke County and surrounding counties opportunity to attend programs that they probably would have never had this opportunity in their lifetime, had it not been for Bill Wilson. He's a, he's a great man. He's got many things to look forward to in the future, and I wish him well, and I know all of the city employees wish him well also. We all hate to see him go, but we wish you well, Bill, and Godspeed.
Lee got three checks. I just got one.
Yeah.
And I've been here longer than he was. That's all they gave you?
Yeah.
If Lee's sixty-five, then I've got to be eighty-five. I do want to take a couple of minutes. We've had some time, or I've had some time, with a lot of folks in the past few weeks to kind of reflect and celebrate some of the activities and happenings and good things that have happened in the city and at Kama in particular. And I appreciate those times, and I want to take a moment to reiterate a few thank yous that were said publicly at a reception held by the city for me last Tuesday, and just a couple of other comments, too. So if you will indulge me with that, I do appreciate it. I want to go back in time a little bit and I'll thank some of the early folks that were involved with Kama. Lee mentioned Mike Cronk as city manager, hiring him. I was actually hired by Doug Bean, who was city manager in eighty-six, went on to Asheville. Andy Kissler was the mayor back then. Bob Choak, Dr. Alfred Hamer, Molly Darwin, and Danny Lingerfeld sat in the seats that you occupy today. It was their vision that allows me to stand here today. I want to thank Mike especially for his support and leadership through the nineties and Sally since then, both good friends, good mentors. I want to thank our former mayor, Mel Cohen, for his support and all the councils that served with him over the years. I especially want to thank the department heads and all the department members and employees of the city. At one time or the other, Lee said, that he's probably talked to everybody in town, I think at one time or another, just about every department head has provided some service to Kama, because a lot of times we can't call an electrician or a plumber or someone like that or a design person to help us out, but we've got those people in this house here to make things happen. I have a great staff. I've always had good staff, and I continue to have a good staff. The volunteers that we have, we have a hundred-plus volunteers that provide three to four thousand, man and woman hours at Kama each and every year. That equates in volunteer time to somewhere around eighty-five to a hundred thousand dollars, or we would do without. Fortunately, we don't have to do without. And I guess one other area that I can't ignore are the patrons, the people who buy the tickets, the people who come to wedding receptions, the people who come to gospel sings and dance recitals and graduations. There's an opportunity for a high school band to perform on a professional stage, and they're not locked into a gym with terrible acoustics. This means a lot to them. A brief note, years ago, I had a young person come to me who'd been a Freedom High School band member. She had gone on to play in some symphonies and toured the country and into Canada. She said that she had played in a lot of places, but none were better than Kama. I want to put in one plug, at a time when arts, culture, arts education are taking a big hit now through federal government, state, and even local education systems where arts programs, music programs are being denied and cut, I want to say publicly and on the record that it is just as important for a student to have the opportunity to pick up a baseball bat as a script, a piano as a football, whatever. Give them that opportunity, and let's not pit one against the other. I think we have the opportunity as a community, or I wouldn't have stayed in this job, to rise above where we are, and we have. We've continually made this community better by the people who have the opportunity and are given that opportunity to make it better. I want to thank this council especially, and the councils in the past in this community, for providing me a career that has been a friendly place to work. As Lee says, it has been fun. If it's not fun, knowing him and me, well, we're just not going to do it. I've had the opportunities to meet people that I would have never met in this world, and we've had the opportunity to see them perform. I think back to the older days when Floyd Kramer was here, when Roy Clark was here, when Ray Charles was here, when the big, big musicals, The Tap Dance Kids, Sound of Music, South Pacific, shows of that nature, Chorus Line, things that were cutting edge. We didn't do just entertainment. We did things that elevated the level of consciousness in this community. I want to mention something going back to arts education just a little bit. There were two shows that came to us in one year that had a great opportunity, and that was The Nutcracker, which I think you're probably familiar with, the holiday version ballet, Tchaikovsky, and Wizard of Oz, second performance of that. In both of those instances, two community users of Kama, Debbie Huffman with her dance academy and Sherry McGimpsey with her dance academy, came together and provided dancers for the smaller roles, Sugarplum Fairies in The Nutcracker and The Munchkins in Wizard of Oz. And those children had the opportunity to perform with a professional touring company, the same company that plays in Charlotte and Atlanta and Chicago and L.A. And what was neat about one of those in particular, the wizard came to me and said, "I've been doing shows forever." And he said, "We've been putting kids in as munchkins and monkeys for this whole tour all year, and you're on the end of the tour." He said, "Every night, a kid gets sick, one cries, one doesn't show up, things happen, it goes crazy." He said, "We want to take these kids with us." That says a lot about how things work in Morganton. I want to wish this City Council the best. I want to wish my successor, Jim Smith, the best. You've hired a great man. I know that the best is what we accept here, and nothing than that. I wish this council the best. I thank you for your support, and I look forward. I told Sally I'm going to be dropping in every few days so they can acclimate getting used to my leaving. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Best wishes. We have a presentation of a service pen for Nancy Brewer, who I believe came to work on February the second, nineteen eighty-one, and has been with the city thirty-five years. She's not with us tonight, but we'll make that presentation later. We have some public advocacy issues and strategy, upcoming events. Of course, Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat will be Thursday, February the eighteenth at seven thirty, and Johnny Rivers will not be attending on March the third. We'll get more information about that later. We have a bond referendum that's real critical for North Carolina and especially for Burke County and Morganton. I'm going to ask Dr. Michael Helmick, President of Western Piedmont Community College, if he'll come forward and give us some information about the bond referendum to be held March fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Dr. Helmick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. My pleasure to be here. I am here to discuss with you the impact of the Connect NC Public Improvement Bond that comes up for a vote on March the fifteenth, and I'm certainly here as an advocate of that, and you will probably discover why somewhere during the process of this. This is my second time addressing this board. The last time I was here, it was two thousand and ten. I came before you all and asked that you allow Western Piedmont Community College the ability to have chickens, pigs, and goats on the campus. the ability to have chickens, pigs, and goats on the campus. Do you approve that? The chickens, pigs, and goats are doing fine. Thank you very much. We continue to have those folks, or those animals on our campus. A little bit about Western Piedmont Community College. We are one of 58 comprehensive community colleges in North Carolina. We offer over 70 degrees in areas that range from adult high school to ESLs, English as a Second Language, to transfer programs, to workforce-directed programs. We feel like we have something for everybody at Western Piedmont Community College, and many of the folks in this room, I know, have been impacted in a positive way by the college. There are great jobs with excellent pay in this community, terrific jobs that are out there, and those are excellent pay with benefits right here in Burke County. But those jobs require something beyond high school, and community colleges are in there to fill the void between what comes between high school and the workplace. North Carolina community colleges are different from other states. We are the third-largest community college system in the country. Community colleges in this state are controlled by a local board of trustees that are made up by appointments from the county commission, school board, and the governor, and they are a great place for service. And in fact, we have, Mayor Thompson serves on our board of trustees, and also Mr. Ron Martin is in the audience. He is one of our trustees also, and they, I think, would tell you it's a wonderful place to serve the community. We are funded primarily by the state, but the county also contributes a significant amount to the operation of the college. Burke County has been extremely generous to the college here recently. One example of that generosity is our new mechatronics building that we hope to break ground on shortly, depending on the weather. That building is being built with a Golden Leaf grant that required a match from the county of $450,000. That, in addition to a grant from the Cannon Foundation for $100,000, will ensure that graduates from that program of mechatronics will stay in Burke County and work in our local industry. But part of staying strong is providing the much-needed funds for the success of those graduates. Technical programs at our institution are expensive, and the facilities to house those technical programs are quite expensive. New state-of-the-art equipment and facilities is required to house that equipment, and quite frankly, it costs more than the local budget, the local county budget can bear. On March 15th, we will all have the opportunity to help ensure North Carolina's dominance and Burke County's dominance in science, technology, and engineering and mathematics, as well as helping propel the state forward in infrastructure, defense of our communities, agricultural growth, and tourism by voting for the Connect NC Bond Referendum. The $2 million Connect NC Public Improvement Bond bill provides the following amounts for the state of North Carolina. I'm also going to break out the amount for Burke County as I'm doing this. At the end of this, if you add it all up, there's about a $91 million plus for Burke County. About $1 billion of this bond will be for the UNC system, that's the University of North Carolina system, most of which will be used to build buildings that will help in those STEM projects. Remember STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. $58 million is coming to Burke County for the Western School of Math and Science to be located either on the Broughton campus or on the North Carolina School for the Death Campus, an offshoot of the North Carolina School of Science and Math in Durham. It is part of the University of North Carolina system. Approximately 300 high school students will be participating in that program, and those are residential students who will live right here in Morganton. They will live in dormitories on the campus where the school is located. They will participate in city and county activities, and they will be enjoying our great outdoor way of life here in Burke County. Western Piedmont has already pledged to help this effort by providing facilities to enhance student activities and education. We have met with the chancellor of that school and told him that we will participate in whatever way that we can as a college. We are not sure what the final advantage will be to Western Piedmont Community College for having those students here, but we know that we feel like that it will be substantial. In addition to that amount, $180 million is for agriculture to support the growth of farming and food production in the state, and some of those funds will be used here in North Carolina, or excuse me, will be used right here in Burke County. Remember the chickens, pigs, and goats that I referenced earlier. We have the largest sustainable agriculture program at Western Piedmont of any community college in the state. $78.5 million is in the bond for the National Guard and Public Safety enhancement. $21 million of that is going to come to this county to retrofit the Western Youth Detention, also called the high-rise in this area, and to make that a facility to serve as a training facility for the National Guard. Western Piedmont has worked diligently with the military in the past. We are a military-friendly school, and we know that we will be called upon to provide additional educational opportunities at that facility. We are not sure what kind of activities we will be doing out there, but we know that we are going to participate. There's an additional $312,500, $312,500,000 for water and sewer projects. We will have the opportunity in this county to put in a request for those funds, and we hope that some of those funds will come to us. And then there's $100 million for parks and zoos, and included in that amount will be a new welcome center for Lake James Park and additional facilities for South Mountain Park. But the main thing that I want to emphasize with what I'm going to tell you tonight is the $350 million for the North Carolina Community College system. We stand to gain about $5.1 million at Western Piedmont. What that will do is help provide funds to help us build or alter our facilities at the college. We're going to be retrofitting buildings that will allow us to accommodate more high school students on our campus. Are you aware, for example, and I hope you all are, that a student can earn a two-year degree or another credential from the community college system while they're still in high school, and there is no charge for tuition? Did you know that Burke Middle College is the highest-ranked middle college in the state, and that the ranking includes the highest graduates of any middle college in the state? And that's right here at Western Piedmont Community College. For years, we have shifted students around in various buildings, and we have had an opportunity to move some programs around, retrofit a building, and accommodate all of our partnership programs with Burke County schools. This includes the recently added STEAM Academy that is now on our campus that moved there last year. As part of this retrofit, what we plan to do is consolidate more of our health science programs at the Foothill Higher Education Center, making management, managing some of our largest programs easier, and locating them closer to our major user, which is Carolina's healthcare Blue Ridge at Morganton. We'll be right across the street from that organization. As many of you are aware, we also have had security issues on colleges and school campuses all across the country. Recent events at Amquah Community College in Oregon and other colleges across the world have pointed out that community colleges are what they call "soft targets." And as we need to do more to protect and secure our students on our campus, part of the Connect NC Bond money will be used to develop an improved entry system for our buildings, ensuring that we can control access during normal operating hours and ensure the future safety of our student. I provided a few examples of what Western Piedmont plans to do with our Connect NC Bonds, but let's talk about what the bond is and why it matters to you. There is a committee that has been formed in this county, and that committee is headed by Spring Williams Byrd at the Cooperative Extension Service, and Johnny Carswell, who is the county commissioner, who is in the audience tonight, and also Ronnie Thompson is a member of that committee. I cannot imagine that there would be opposition to the proposed bond issue, but there are some concerns that are being expressed, and I want to address those. There is no tax increase scheduled for this bond. The taxes to pay off the bond are already in place and will not be altered. North Carolina has a AAA bond rating, so that our rate of interest is very low, hence we qualify for a much better rate on the bonds. There's a false assertion that the bond will add about $800 million annually to the total debt service for the state, but the reality is that it will be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $150 million annually. And as I said, that has already been taken care of with taxes that are currently in place. There will be no county maintenance fees for the Western School of Science and Math because they are part of the UNC system, and UNC takes care of their own buildings. They do not have the ability to tax the local authorities, so they will be handling the maintenance of those buildings. Many activities are being promoted across the state to educate citizens about this bond issue, including a voter awareness day that will be at Western Piedmont Community Campus this Thursday at 11:00 a.m., where we will urge students to register, educate them about the bond, and provide additional information about the primary election that is coming up. I want to thank you this evening for your time and attention, and I would urge you to vote for that bond when it comes up. Also want to close by going back to the beginning of my presentation and talking about the potential to grow Burke County and how that will happen. We are uniquely positioned in this state to be between two metropolitan areas, and if we take advantage of this bond, we will certainly be able to grow not only the community college, but as a result, grow this community. So I would urge you, I know that you have a resolution coming up, I would urge you all to approve that resolution and go forth with this bond issue. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Helmuth. He is correct. We do have a resolution supporting the Connect North Carolina Bond Act of 2015. It reads, "Whereas the Connect NC Bond will invest $2 billion in targeted long-term projects across the state, and whereas the bond will fund $980 million in projects for the University of North Carolina system, and whereas the bond will fund $350 million in projects for the North Carolina Community College system, and whereas the bond will fund $670 million, of which $309 million will be in water and sewer infrastructure, along with local parks, National Guard, agriculture, and public safety, and whereas the Connect NC Bond will fund the following projects in Burke County: $58 million for a new Western campus of the North Carolina School of Science and Math on state property in Morganton; $23 million to repurpose the now-closed Western Youth Institute in Burke County into a readiness center for the North Carolina National Guard; $5.1 million for projects at Western Piedmont Community College; $3 million for improvements at Lake James State Park; and $2.25 million for improvements at South Mountain State Park. And whereas the bond-funded projects would have the extraordinary positive impact on the future growth and prosperity of Morganton and Burke County, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Morganton vigorously support the Connect NC Bond Act of 2015 and educate and have advocacy efforts for the statewide voter referendum in March of 2016 adopted this first day of February 2016, Ronnie Thompson Mayor, Sally Sandy Clerk, to have a motion to accept this resolution."
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We oppose. The motion passes 4-0. I would ask the citizens, this information is available on the website for Connect NC Bond Act. The vote will actually be a ballot. There'll be five separate ballots, whether you're a Democrat, Republican, affiliated. It'll probably be the last thing on the ballot that you vote on, and you'll vote for or against that referendum. There won't be a yes or no vote. It'll be for or against. So please take time to go vote on March 15th of 2016. Thank you, Louis. Okay, Sally, do we have anything from the North Carolina Municipal Power Agency?
Just to let you know that the rate committee will be starting work next month for numbers for next year's budget, and I also have one thing for public advocacy, and that is a thank you to the departments and the city employees for the recent storm. We were very fortunate for electric and cable, that it was a dry snow and that they didn't have to get out and do what they usually do. However, a lot of snow did hit Public Works and Water Resources hard, and I thank everybody for their efforts. All the departments pulled together, helped each other, and I really appreciate all the hard work that happened. And so everyone knows the storm cost us about $54,000, and that is what we spent.
Thank you, Sally. Cruz did a great job. Next on the agenda is consideration of filling the District Four council vacancy. Each councilman has a ballot in front of them. I would ask for you to take that ballot. We're going to vote at least twice tonight, and if you would cast your vote for Wendy Cato or John Henry, and I'll ask our recording secretary to take up those ballots, or Louis to give the ballots to our recording secretary.
Okay, the votes are Mayor Thompson, John Henry, Councilman Fleming, Wendy Cato. Councilman Simmons voted for John Henry, and Councilman Cantrell voted for Wendy Cato.
Okay. I don't know that we need another vote. We do have some ballots, but I'm pretty sure the vote won't change, so if the candidate had not received three votes, we're going to suspend the selection process, return to further consideration, and we'll vote at the council's next meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It seems to be rather obvious that we're at an impasse with this vote, it being a 2-to-2 vote. I would like for the council to consider the possibility of exploring a special election, contacting the Board of Elections, and inquiring with them the possibility that we might be able to schedule a special election to give the people of the city of Morganton an opportunity to make this election, as it appears that we're continuing to be at an impasse now. We've had five votes on this. Three votes occurred in the previous month. Well, it's four votes. We only voted one time tonight, so we voted four different times. I would like to, at this time, I'd like to call on our attorney to enlighten us on the possibility of requesting a special election to resolve this issue, because I think we would all agree, and all of those folks that are watching this on TV, as well as all you folks that are sitting out here in our audience tonight, I think you would agree that this issue needs to be resolved, and we need to get on with the business of the city of Morganton. So, Mr. Vina, what would be the possibility that we could explore a special election?
May I address that, Mr. Mayor?
And when would it occur?
Well, I think the when is probably the problematic part of it, Councilman Fleming. The city council could call a special election, you certainly have the authority to do that. The problem is that the legislature recently changed the law on special elections to say that the only time that they may be held, and I looked this up beforehand because I had possibly thought this question might come up, they may only be held at the time of a general election, which would be in November of this year, or at the time of a primary election, or at any other time when all the other precincts in the county are required to be open. Now, unfortunately, our primary election is coming up March 15th, and since special election notices have to be published at least 45 days prior to the election, and early voting begins, what, March 5th or something like that, it's impossible for you to get one set for the March 15th primary election. Therefore, unless by some chance there's a runoff primary in the spring sometime, there's no way you could hold a special election before November. You're no longer allowed to set a special election just for city purposes.
Thank you, Louis. Does that answer your question?
So, of course, you could do it. There's no question, you could do it in November at the general election, which would still be one year before the seat would normally be up for election. Let me say that. I would assume, and Sally and I spoke briefly about this, that since the city doesn't otherwise, as far as we know, wouldn't otherwise have anything on the ballot in November, that the county board of elections would charge us whatever they would normally charge to print the ballots and do that for the November election.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
That answers my question. I'd like to know the feeling of the other members of the council on the matter.
Councilman Cantrell?
I hope we don't have to go to that, because it would be a burden on candidates that would only be serving one year, and it would be more of an expense on candidates than on us, because now that the county is handling the elections, it's, I think, $1,800 was our fee for this last election, so that's not a big deal. But for the candidates to go through the hassle of a campaign and then only serve one year, I think that's a disadvantage that makes that, that would be a tough decision for me. But I think each one of the four of us that have to... But I think, I think each one of the four of us that have to make this decision, it, it makes it even tougher after, you know, hearing, you know, four people speak eloquently about John Henry and one about Wendy Cato, but I would, I'd urge each one of us to look at the other comments that we have received in the last four weeks. The number of emails, the number of phone calls, and personal contacts has been, it's been outstanding. And I think the News Herald has published the emails that we have received through probably last Thursday or Friday, and there, as of that day, I think there were probably about 30 of the emails indicated their endorsement of Wendy Cato. And I have heard from many supporters of Wendy Cato, I have heard from a fewer number of supporters of John Henry. Now, I've supported Wendy in both of our votes, and the reason that I have supported Wendy, and it's, it's been tough, because I know John Henry is a very good man, and he has served in a lot of ways, but he has not served in the community. There have been opportunities on many committees and commissions during the past 30 years that John did not take advantage of. Now, in his interview with the News Herald, he, he addressed that, and it was because of the demands of his business. Well, the demands become even greater when you're on the city council. And if you look at the, the resumes of both candidates, and look how Wendy Cato has given of her time in the community, in leadership positions, and for the benefit of this community. Now, Mayor Thompson was quoted in the paper about philosophically different opinion on how the city should operate. I don't know exactly what that means, Mayor.
John, the question is, would you support a special election? They're not, we're not campaigning for anybody, but would you, would you support the idea of a special election?
No.
I'm not sure I got a yes or, okay.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Councilman Simmons?
I can see both Forrest and John side, but I got no problem with it. I think the people ought to decide who it is anyway.
Then I'll ask for city attorney to explore the possibility, the cost, and the, I guess the details. Forrest, I don't know, we need a vote, I think we just ought to direct city council, I mean, city attorney and staff to, to bring some details to our next meeting, obviously we can't do it in the primary, will we correct?
You don't have 45 days to give notice.
Forrest, does that help?
Yes, it does. I, I think that I'll probably speak for many of the residents of the city. If we're going to be at an impasse, then we should put this in the hands of the, of the citizens of Morganton, and they'll have an opportunity if, if, if this, if this goes through and we, we wind up having a special election that's held this November, if this goes on to that period of time, then it'll be the people's choice.
Thank you. Okay, under consent agenda, Sally?
The consent agenda before you tonight includes 11 items, and would ask you to consider those in one motion unless someone would like something removed and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, those 11 items include minutes from the January 4th council meeting, tax releases in the amount of $80.50, budget amendment to receive funds from some insurance claims for public safety vehicles, the calendar of events for 2016 for downtown, an ordinance required by new state law for street closings for those events in downtown, the declaring surplus of a 1996 tandem dump truck, the purchase of a new four-wheel drive dump truck, the consideration of the date for advertisements for unpaid real estate taxes, and that date would be April the 6th, 2016, purchase of a 2016 Dodge Ram pickup truck for water treatment, naming of a private roadway off Ceramic Tile Drive and calling that Innovation Drive, and then consideration of installing overhead street name signs of Avery Avenue and Buchell Street intersections at the exit 105 interchanges that are signaled, Annie Nola Road and exit 104 signaled interchanges, and that also has a budget amendment attached to that for $15,432 for those signs.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Are there any items to be taken off the consent agenda? A motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a second. I would like to point out before we vote, and in reference to what Sharon does with the Morganton Downtown Development Association, the annual chili cook-off is going to be March the 11th at the Morganton Community House from 11:00 to 1:00. It's just critical that, yeah, we need to make sure people hear that, we'll probably have another council meeting before then, but let's get the publicity out early. We have a motion to accept the consent agenda, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passes 4-0. Under new business, we've got the consideration of an award of a contract for the new 1.0 million gallon clear well construction at the water treatment plant. Sally?
Yes, the new clear well, which is a project that we've been working on for several years, and a project that we have applied for state revolving loan fund monies at 0% interest, and we have been told that we have qualified for that. We have now taken bids for this project, and we let out the bids, we received five bids, the lowest responsive bid came from Brushy Mountain Builders of Lenore, someone that we have done a lot of contracting work with in the past. That bid came in at $1,213, which was slightly over our budget, went back, did some value engineering, changed up the project a little bit, and that, as is allowed with negotiating with the low bidder, I might add, came back with a bid of $1,38,000, which is in our budget, so that we would ask you to award that bid to Brushy Mountain Builders in the amount of $1,38,000.
Do I have a motion to accept this?
A motion authorized in a contract with Brushy Mountain Builders Incorporated of Lenore, North Carolina, in the amount of $1,38,000 for the construction of a new 1 million gallon clear well at the water treatment plant.
Do I have a second? In discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passes 4-0. We also have consideration of appointment by the mayor to the Morganton Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, Sally?
We have several appointments to the Housing Authority Board. Two, we have been asked by that board to consider as reappointments, and those are Brian Black and Teresa Dehart, both have been good members of that board and participated, so those two will come before you tonight for a term of February 1, 2016 to February 1, 2021, five-year term, as per the ordinance. That will leave one vacancy, which is required to be a tenant, and Steve Villar at the Housing Authority is working on trying to get someone willing to serve in that seat.
Thank you, do I have a motion?
Actually, I think that's...
Okay, the mayor will appoint Brian Black and Teresa Dehart to the Morganton Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, where terms to expire February 1, 2021. We also have 30-day notice for vacancies on boards and commissioners. Sally, what's coming up?
The Fireman Supplemental Retirement Board, three seats. Dave Rader has retired, David Ferber is a council appointment, and Sergeant Robin Triplet is a public safety appointment. We'll bring names of people interested in that to you next time for your next agenda, and we'll remind everyone in the audience and those viewing at home, if you would like to serve on a board or have an appointment considered, those applications are available on our website or in Kelly Russell's office.
Does any member of the council have anything to come before the council tonight? If not, we stand adjourned.